Call the meeting in order. Please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under power, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, will the clerk call roll, please?
Counselor Bowlin?
Here.
Counselor Elliott?
Here.
Counselor Fisher?
Here.
Counselor Furlough?
Here.
Counselor Grissel?
Here.
And Counselor Reese Camp?
Here.
Thank you. First up, we have the consent calendar. We have the agenda for the council meeting today. And we have the board minutes from the Library Advisory Board, April 12, 2016.
Move for approval.
Can I?
My understanding is we were going to amend the agenda to remove three items. So technically, what we should do is remove the agenda from the consent calendar and then move to amend the agenda.
Well, no one told me that. Thank you.
I thought everybody knew that.
No, it was something I cooked up. No, no, it's my—
What are you doing?
No, there's a discussion on those items.
Okay. I got here right before, and I thought you said you were removing them.
No, I said—
So they were replaced with a new document.
Are we gonna do something different?
No.
Okay.
You told me this was true.
I did not.
We had a motion to approve—
I second.
—the consent calendar, and it's been seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Consent calendar passes. Public comments. We have an opportunity for the public to comment. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Xena? We'll move into the regular session. First up is the water treatment plant, and that will be Rob this time.
May I? The little buttons right.
Jason.
There we go. Mr. Whitlatch could not be here today. He is up evaluating the bids that we received for our water treatment plant. So we're gonna change things up a little bit today. We have a memo that we passed out that's probably in front of you. We opened bids yesterday on the treatment plant. They were substantially higher than we had hoped and substantially higher than the engineer's estimate. The engineer's estimate was $22 million. The apparent low bidder came back at just under $29 million. So very disappointing. So we are evaluating—we're recommending to postpone the award from this council meeting to the June 8 council meeting. We—Ron, right now, with our consulting engineer and with Jason Williams, is up in Washington at the Stellar J, which is the apparent low bidder. They are evaluating that bid, taking a look at that bid, finding where the discrepancies are between the estimate and the bid. And that's all we know for now. We don't know where the cost overruns are. So to give ample time to figure things out, we're just gonna postpone the award or hopefully award the next course of action until June 8.
So does that require a motion, or is that just a consent to postpone agenda items?
I think a motion is fine. It's cleaner because it's on the agenda as an action item.
Okay.
And you're acting as the contract review board, so to postpone it, a motion is fine.
Just a question. What was the high bid?
High bid was just under $35 million. So there were seven bids, the low, just under $29, $28.8 million, and the high bid was just under $35 million. And the rest were grouped right in between there. So the good news, if you want to say, all the bids were clumped together, were close, which tells us that that is the actual cost of the project. The bad news is—
That is the actual cost of the project.
That's the cost of the project.
And it's above our funding, what we have for funding. So—
So, a couple of questions with respect to the funding. One, how long of a window do we have for the grant for us to be able to reevaluate and proceed forward? And second, is there an opportunity, if we identify what the true cost of the project is, and it is significantly higher than what we received in the grants, is there an opportunity to request additional funding from them?
And so, two questions. IFA, who is our—who is—who we have the loans through, they—we haven't contacted them and proposed that question, but working with them to date, they've been more than flexible in how we—how they disperse the funds and the timing for those funds. So I—without having specifically contacted IFA, I'm confident that that funding is gonna be there even if we have to delay the project a year or a month, several months, or however—whatever that time period would be. And is there—second part, is there a chance for additional funding? Probably more remote. That's—that would be a little less likely from IFA. The IFA award we have is the largest they've done to date. So the cost of the project, I'm really hesitant. We've had some internal discussion. We'd be really hesitant just to fund it at that price because it doesn't—it just—that's too much money. So we're—we need to find out what—if we can't get the scope of the project reduced and aren't able to work anything out with the apparent low bidder, do some value engineering, and reduce the cost of the project to within our funding limit, that's the first course of action. That's what—that's what we're pursuing today. If that isn't possible—and there's Oregon contracting law, which is a whole 'nother issue that we'll have to deal with. If that isn't successful, then we'd be really hesitant just to fund it, just to go out with a—with additional funding, with a private bond on bonding market. We'd really find—I wanna find out why it's so expensive and how can we reduce the cost.
Other questions?
I move that we postpone agenda items one, two, and three.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to move—postpone items number one, two, and three. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. Thank you, Rob.
Ron owes you big time for having to be the one here to face this.
Yeah, well, he's—
Yes.
Well, he's up facing the contractor right now, so that's not easy either.
Well, that's a love—
Okay, number four, the CH-2M Hill Contract Amendment.
So CH-2M Hill runs both our water and wastewater treatment plant. I think most of you know. We come up every year to amend their contract, and this year's no different. They are proposing a 2% increase to both their water plant operation and their wastewater treatment plant operation cost. That's below the inflationary index of 3.1%. So we were tickled with that cost, and the staff recommends that that's a—that's a good price increase.
Did—you guys on staff go through and look at what it would cost if the city maintained that and took that back?
We—we are evaluating that for the water plant—
Okay.
—and that, but not the wastewater plant.
Okay.
And CH had that initial discussion with CH, nothing in depth with that. In the year to come, that's gonna move forward—
Okay.
—kind of full steam.
Okay. Thank you.
I just—if you could share with us how this proposed increase compares to what you placed in the budget?
We placed in the budget—in fact, we—when we prepared the budget, we were looking at what the inflationary index was gonna be or what we thought it was gonna be at that point. It was coming in right around 3%. So we—we proposed—initially proposed 3%. We got their number—we got their final number before the budget was finalized, and we put in the budget, what their contract amount.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Move for the approval of the contract amendment?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the CH-2M Hill Contract Amendment. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. Number five, approval of revised employee handbook. Debbie Schimman.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay.
Hi, Debbie.
I'm happy to be here to answer any questions you have regarding the employee handbook. I wanted to let you know what the process was like this time around. We—I met—I had a ad hoc committee of employees of different classifications, and we met once a month, and we went over a few chapters, and we basically went page by page, and we evaluated the language. The desire for this handbook was we wanted it to be a useful tool for the employees so that when they read it, it made sense to them. So there was a balance between—is this easy to read—and the balance against—is this a legal document? Do we have all the required information? The challenge in sending it off to the attorney was them coming back and saying, "We need you to insert additional language regarding femaline leave, bereavement leave, and all these other considerations where there have been changes in employment laws." So we added that and came up with this final document. Then we sent it to the ASME and Teamsters presidents for their review to see if they have any questions or concerns, and they came back and were amenable to the document. So I'm here to have it approved and begin using it. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Debbie, I—
Go ahead.
I just wanted to commend you and the group, the team members, because it is really a well-done document. I did read through it. A few nights, I fell asleep, but I did—I did read.
I know.
I did read it. And I—I actually read it in a whole different way. I read it thinking as if I was a new employee for the city. And I went in thinking to see if it was telling me the things that I would want to know as a new employee. And it really did, and I think it's really well done.
Well, thank you very much.
And I think you did strike that balance.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
No, that was what I was gonna say. I thought it was very well done. I kind of bleeped through it, but—but I thought it was very good, and I would make a motion to approve it as written.
Second.
Before we do that, I just wanted to see, was there any other comments or questions?
I'll say one quick thing.
Go ahead, Gary.
This was a project that Debbie tackled, and it's due to her direction and leadership that saw this through that we have this document now. I'm really happy with it. I've—I've read through it, too. In fact, I've actually had my hand in different areas as they requested me to do so. But Debbie really is one of our outstanding employees, and she's always going to the greatest length possible to achieve what needs to be done. I wanted to recognize her and her superb service to the city. This is just one product that—that is an example of the quality of her work. Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you.
Time to ask for a raise, Deb.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Yeah, I would move that we approve the employee's handbook as written.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Lebanon City Employee Handbook. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Approved. Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you very much.
Number six, amending Lebanon Municipal Code 121404 regarding an exclusion from city parks. Trey Kennedy.
All right, let me see if I can get through this without confusing everybody. Sorry about that. Is that on? Testing. What we're doing is, as many of you know, we already have a ordinance in place that allows officers—the chief of police or officers—to exclude individuals from the park if they are—have probable cause to believe that they have violated certain ordinances or certain municipal violations. What the chief asked me and our city prosecuting attorneys, Jesse and Rachel, asked is for a little bit more authority. Why are we limiting it to just those specific offenses? And the answer was, "I don't know. Let's see if we can—if we can expand that." And the answer was that it looks like we can expand that. And so, on the request of both the prosecuting attorneys and the police, we have expanded the issues. Basically, you violate a law, either a city of Lebanon law or the city—or state law, while you're in one of our city parks, and we have probable cause to believe that, you can be excluded for 30 days. In addition, if you violate the exclusion notice and we catch you back in the park, you can be excluded for an additional 180 days. Or if you violate another law or ordinance of the city of Lebanon, we're gonna exclude you for 365 days. Basically, this is one part of our effort—the police department's effort to continue policing and maintaining the safety of our parks and city facilities in Lebanon. And it's just another tool in their tool belt that they're doing that we can use to do that. I would say that in many of our prosecutions—city prosecutions, when we enter into a—basically, an agreement with the defendant where they plead guilty, part of that sentencing, if it was something that had something to do with the park, they also stipulate to a extended sentence that would exclude them from the park. So they actually sign something that agrees not to go back into the parks for a certain amount of time. This allows us to do it ahead of time and has some consequences if they—if they violate that. So, you know, I'd ask the chief just to maybe—oh, and the one other thing we do is we—as many of you know, we have Dave Alban—how do you pronounce his last name? Albanese? Albanese? Who's doing a terrific job. I see him all the time over in the park. I was gonna say, I see him all the time in the park across from our office. He's talking with people. He's—he's walking around. His presence is unbelievable. I don't know how much—any hours he's working, but it seems like I see him all the time in various parks. And this gives him the authority, I believe, as well, to do the—to do the exclusion orders as a agent of the chief. So, Chief, I didn't know if you wanted to add anything to this.
Well, I think you pretty much nailed it. What this will allow us to do is, again, as it stands right now—everyone hear me?
Hold on just a second.
Yeah.
There we go.
So as it stands right now, you are correct. Mr. Albanese is spending a majority of his shift in the parks right now. And one of the things that we came across when reviewing some ways to make the parks safer was Mr. Albanese did not have the authority underneath our ordinance—underneath our current ordinance—to exclude individuals from the parks. So kind of what was happening is he's going out there, contacting people, calling someone from patrol to come. And so, we were having kind of a reverse effect of what—the vision is of the job. So what this will allow him to do is exclude individuals on his authority. I'm granting him the authority to do so. And it also broadens our tools to exclude individuals from the parks. So as it stands right now, there's only a select few of things that we can exclude people from our parks: drinking, fighting, criminal mischief, theft, or something like that. But what—I was after was just make it all ordinances. And of course, you know, discretion is gonna be placed, and it's not—we're gonna be out there excluding people just because they don't have their dog on a leash. So it's gonna be a case-by-case basis, but it will allow us to address the issues that we've had and are continuing to have in our parks.
I have a question. It talks about if they—at any time within the exclusion period, an individual violates the exclusion order and goes back into a city park within their 30 days, then—the penalty for that is extending the exclusion period. But if I snubbed 30 days, what's the teeth if I just keep—if I just keep going back in? And you can extend that from here to eternity, and if I give a rat's fat fanny, I'm—you know, what do you do to me?
What—that—what the saying is, right now, we only can exclude people for 30 days. So I exclude someone for 30 days, they're back in the park, I arrest them, they come out, they're still excluded for 30 days. Does that make sense? So there's only a 30-day—it limits us to only 30 days. What this will also do is, we exclude you, you come back in the park, I arrest you, now I'm excluding you for even a longer period.
Arrest for trespass.
Arrest for trespassing. Thank you. So, you know, it would just kind of extend that portion, because people—what's what's happening is, we exclude individuals that come in the parks, they get arrested, they still—they know they only have 30 days, so they're like, "Okay."
Right. I'm not questioning the extension of that. My question is, what's the teeth? And the teeth is being arrested for trespass.
Right. Once they're excluded, it's no different than—once the person in charge, which is Albanese or a police officer, has excluded you from an area, you're on notice then, and then entry into that area would be a trespass.
Okay.
Chief, what's the frequency of that? I mean, on an annual basis, how many ones do you possibly would apply this to?
I would apply it to all the problematic individuals. It's pretty frequent, and it was frequent last summer. And that was the frustrating part of last summer, was we were excluding individuals. One was the presence. They would just go to another park, or they'd—you know, they knew exactly what day they could come back into the park, and then we'd start having the same problems. Or they'd stumble on the edge of the park and cause more problems, because they knew the limitation. So, you know, I—I—I'm looking at this—I'm trying to attack this from all different avenues and all different angles that I—that I possibly can within my authority to make our parks safer. And the message I want sent out is, if you're not gonna abide by what the council and what the city has set forth as far as laws, rules, and regulations, then you're not gonna be welcomed into these parks. And that's the message I want to be sent. So the frequency that we use—we exclude people a lot. And right now, they know—they know exactly what they can and cannot do. They know it's only for 30 days. And they know now that Mr. Albanese is paying attention to that. That's his primary function, and he does it very well. So does that answer?
I have another question. If they're excluded from, say, River Park, and they move to Ralston or Cheadle Lake, does that apply to those other two? They can't go in those either?
Correct.
Okay.
So Cheadle Lake to Ralston, all of our city-owned parks, we're saying—
They're excluded.
They're—you're excluded. You can't be within these parks. And, you know, before, like you said, they would go—they'd be excluded from Ralston, they'd go to River. We exclude them from River, then they'd go to another park, because they—you know, they kind of understood our our pattern. But we kind of threw them a curveball with Dave Albanese. It is—it's really comical. I don't know if you guys ever can watch it, but you have a group in a park that's causing a problem. Albanese shows up, and they pffft, hit on it. And they usually don't come back, because he'll follow them around, because they go from park to park to park. So, you know, that's the idea, is we had such a—an issue with mainly Ralston Park, but, you know, all of our parks were having issues, that, you know, it was—you know, I was hearing comments—I know you guys were hearing comments of, "I don't want to take my kids to the park because I feel unsafe." And even I, walking through the parks, I was like, "Yeah, I can understand this." So it's—I guess, in a way, it's—it's kind of a loud voice saying, "We're gonna take our parks back from these individuals who may get to where families are feeling unsafe." That—that really got underneath my skin when I hear families are scared to go into our city parks because they're scared. That—that—that's unacceptable to me. So, you know, what this is allowing us to do is just, again, like Trey explained, giving us a little bit more tools, a little bit more teeth to deal with it, and allows Mr. Albanese to do his job the way that it's designed to do, so.
I appreciate the multi-faceted approach you've done since last year with the Park Watch and just all these different things that we've done. I think is really—it's the right way to do it, because there's just not one answer to it.
Yeah, it's—it's really—yeah, if you step back and you take a 30,000-foot view, it's really not just one thing that you can go in there and solve. It's gonna take—you know, you got the enforcement part of it, that's us, and then you got the community involvement, which is the Park Watch. And it really takes—it takes the community to solve this issue. And the issue is these individuals that think they can just come in and hang out at the parks all day and drink, smoke, cuss, and it's—it's not what the park's designed for.
Trey? I have a question on part—section one, part B, about the appeal. You're laughing. I was curious as to why the city manager is the appeals hearing person?
I wonder that.
And why it wouldn't be the judge?
Well, the city manager had that same question.
Oh.
It's—it's—it—this is a civil infraction. When we're talking about the exclusion itself, it's not criminal, it's civil, which means that, I mean, they can't go to jail for the exclusion themselves. And it's not uncommon in our ordinances—the city of Lebanon ordinances—for an appeal of a civil infraction such as that to go to the city manager. We talked about that, you know, and we talked about, Gary, getting him a robe and a gavel. And I'd brief him on the rules of evidence.
I think he requested it, didn't he, Trey?
Kidding. But we actually did talk. And in this council, if they want to have a discussion about those appeals coming, it would either be going to the city manager or bringing them to the—to this council. And either one is fine, as long—because either one satisfies the due process rights of the individual who's been excluded. It was, you know, my thought that, you know, does this council really want to hear those types of appeals on a regular basis? First, but second, we don't get many appeals.
I love having Gary do it.
Yeah, this is the right place at the right time.
When was the last time we ever had an appeal on—
When I read—when I read the ordinance, boy, my my ears shot up like, "Whoa, I'm a judge? Are you serious?"
Yeah.
I—I—you know, I—I'll tell you right now, I'm still not comfortable with it, but when we—when we met and we talked about it, I could see it was either me or you guys. I'm like, "Okay, I think I know who that is."
It's the right choice, isn't it?
So I'm it.
Okay.
You can make calls.
So I—I mean, to answer your question, in all the years that we've been doing exclusions, I've never had a one until about a month ago. So I had one person wanting to, I guess, appeal the—the fact that they were excluded.
And so, it's not appropriate to send it to our judge?
No.
Okay.
It's not criminal.
Okay.
I think that—I want to compliment you. The things that this council has addressed over the past few months about trying to increase the safety in the community is significant. And I think this is another example of a holistic safety approach, which builds on the foundation of a good community.
Any other questions?
I think we've made significant movement in eliminating some of the issues that we've had at council in the past, as well as this, because I see less and less all the time on the corners and benches here and there. They're just—they went somewhere. Hopefully, they went to Albany.
Ooh, stop.
Hope so.
Like we don't have enough problems with Albany.
Any other comments? Okay, we'll have the city attorney read the ordinance bill.
Ordinance Bill number 2016-11, ordinance number 2880. A bill for an ordinance amending section 12.14.040 of the Lebanon Municipal Code regarding exclusion from city parks for violation of the Lebanon Municipal Code and declaring an emergency.
Move for approval of the ordinance?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the exclusion from city parks, ordinance number 2880. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance passes. Items from council.
I had one, just on the same vein there. I was wondering if I can put Chief on the spot and just get an update on what you see as the—the progress coming from the alcohol zone expansion and also from the solicitation safety ordinance. If you've seen anything from that, and if you could kind of give us some details on how it's going.
I think it's going extremely well. I've seen—we—I guess the calls of service down specifically the Lebanon Plaza have reduced tremendously. And again, it helps, too, that Dave out there, he's giving them the attention, you know, driving through the area and whatnot. So I—I—I believe that that has really impacted us in a very positive way. As far as our ordinance goes, when it comes to the panhandling ordinance, again, I don't know if you guys have noticed, but I see a reduction—reduced individuals standing on the street corners. And the education portion of that was was really well. It was really well done by DeLa and and both Dave. They went out and handed out probably over 3,500 pamphlets of information, not only to the individuals who are panhandling, but also to citizens who were asking what it is that we're out there doing. So it's so much where I've had other agencies contact us, any specific— So, so much where I've had other agencies contact us, me specifically, and they're asking, it took me a while to figure out why they're asking, but, you know, what'd you guys do with that panhandling thing? How'd you guys, how'd you guys approach that? And so, you know, it's, it definitely is a positive thing.
Yeah, I've had three other city attorneys ask me if I had to email them our ordinance. I know Springfield, it either has or is in the process of adopting it.
All right. And, you know, I think we're still gonna have some issues from time to time with the Lebanon Plaza, the impact zone that we've made it there. But what it's nice now is we actually have teeth to sink into, to address those issues, whereas before, it was just kind of a hit-and-miss type thing. So, as well as the ordinance for the panhandling, everyone knows now, they're not supposed to be out there doing it in the way that they were. In fact, we had signs, I don't know if you guys saw some of the signs, some of the individuals are holding up.
Have a heart.
Have a heart, yeah.
Lebanon City.
And we do have a heart. We were handing them out information where they get the resources that they needed. So, and we're encouraging them to go there. In fact, we offered many, many rides. So, not in the back of a car, but anyway, but I think it's, I think it's very, it's been very positive, very good. So, as far as numbers go, it's, you know, well, I'm gonna wait till the summer, when it gets warmer, and we start having more and more individuals out. So, we'll see how, we'll see how it goes.
Okay.
I have a couple of items in relationship to traffic, actually, three complaints on Second Street with the arterial that it's become and the speed, and one that wanted to know what our traffic count was on Von Lane, and that the increased traffic speed and condition there, they thought was way above now what it was a couple of years ago.
What have we done to increase Von Lane?
Probably just residential buildings, population on South of Town.
What was the cross street again?
Von Lane.
Von.
And Second, or what was it?
And Second.
It's related to Second.
Two different streets.
Second's always, I mean, Second's a district.
Was there a specific, was there a specific spot they were talking about on Second? Because there's, Second's so big.
All the way through, from the library to Von Lane on South Main.
Okay. I noticed there were traffic counters out on Main Street. Is that state?
All through town.
Or is that?
That's part of the TSP update.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
So, the concerns were this, by the residents?
The number of vehicles and the speed, yes. And the three on Second Street came from, that would be, what's the street that goes by 711?
E.
E to the stoplight on Airport.
Rob, is that something we can include into the TSP?
Yeah, the TSP, during the process now of getting traffic counts, you see the traffic counters out, that's a process that they'll update the traffic counts around town, and then they will, part of that data, then collecting, they will update their transportation model, which will have current and future projected traffic counts, current traffic data, and then what's projected, maybe in the future. So, as the transportation system moves forward, we'll have that current data, and then what's projected.
Because one of the complaints just came this morning, Bob Richardson, who lived on Von Lane for 40 years, probably, he, and he goes south for the winter and back in the spring. He said the last two years, there's been a drastic speed and vehicle count up increase on Von Lane by his house.
Well, I think you've got considerable amount of new construction going in across the street, across South Main from Joy, and also Eastland Christian.
Heather States.
Yeah, Eastland Christian, and Heather States is filling out. So, I think you're just gonna see that. I don't know that there's anything we can do about it, but...
And I'm assuming that the TSP is gonna include signal control down towards the college area?
That'll be evaluated.
Oh, okay.
They'll take our current recommendations, TSP, our current project list, and evaluate that, how it's gonna be applied, or what differences need to be made to future projects.
Rob, one of the questions Bob asked was, when was the last time a count was done on Von Lane? And I told him, I don't doubt that we've ever done it.
Not to my knowledge, I don't think we've ever. We do have traffic counters that, in the past, we've put out on streets. We can get total volume, and then we can classify between cars and trucks. We have that ability to benefit the pass.
Oh, yeah, I know.
So, that's something we can do, but I think, rather than bring that out, I'd rather see what we're gathering from the TSP and see what that...
I'll just tell them that we're addressing that with TSP.
With respect to the speed, what's the frequency that Second Street gets evaluated where, and with your little monitor rig?
Our speed radar trailer?
Right.
It gets put out there fairly often, because it's a very busy street. It is a busy street. Von Lane, I don't know if we've ever really put it out on Von Lane or not, but I know Second Street, all up and down Second Street, South Main, out by the school. It's been out there, I would say probably once a month, if I can, I mean, just throwing out numbers, but we put it all throughout the city, too, so...
Is all Von Lane city, or is that split down?
No, it is. It's, Von Lane's gonna be one here, another section where some of it's in the city, some of it is not in the city. I think Von Lane, I'd have to go back and look, but there are sections that are not in the city.
Does that radar unit collect data, or is it just?
No.
It's just a...
It's just a reader board.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
Be neat if it collected data, seeing how many people are going over the limit.
Yeah.
Well, the Second Street, and I travel that twice or three times a day, and the speed, you know, I don't know about the vehicle count, but the speed, you know, I would guess on an average is 35, 40, for those that are speeding. It would be at that level.
Was there a concern about daylight hours versus evening times?
No. They did say that the hours between 3:00 and 6:00 were the worst in the evening, and they're not up early enough in the morning to tell me.
We spent...
But I would assume it's the same hours, you know, from 7:00 to 9:00 in the morning.
We spent a considerable amount of time looking at Second Street, God, it's been several years ago, because we had somebody, one person who lived on Second Street complaining about the speed. I don't even know how many hours, I don't know, Frank, if you remember this, that you guys spent just sitting and had, having to monitor the average speed. An average was, I think, like, it was like 28 and a half miles an hour. It was almost 29 was the average. So, some are going 35, and some are going 23. I'm always behind the 23. That's frustrating. But, but we did spend a lot of time on it several years ago.
Yeah, that was, yeah, several years ago, but I remember doing that, yeah.
Yeah, probably 10 or 15.
I bet it was in 2006. I bet it was 10 years ago.
Yeah, I was, I believe I was on Motors, and I was part of that study, or I was on the...
But it won't get, it won't get any better.
No, but she wanted us to put a speed bump, and that is not, you know, that is not gonna happen. We're not gonna start putting speed bumps around town and having the fire trucks literally stop on an artery to get to where they're going. You would just have speed bumps all over town, so what do you do?
Okay, any other discussion?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, guys, 25 years ago, last Friday, I worked my first day as a city manager in a little town called Hepner, Oregon, out in eastern Oregon. The only reason I bring it up to you now is because, you know, with a milestone like that, I'm the kind that kind of looks back and takes account. And looking at all the places I've been and the people I've dealt with, I just want you to know, I feel really blessed that after 25 years, I find myself here, working with such a progressive city council, having such an outstanding, excellent staff, and a community that I feel has really embraced me. So, I feel probably happier in my career than I ever have, and I do not forget that in July of 2013, I blew my first opportunity to be your city manager.
Yes.
And I will not forget, you gave me a second chance in January of 2014. So, I just wanted to take a moment at this point in my career to convey that to you and say thank you. I'm so happy that I'm here.
Well, I don't want to speak for the whole council, but I think we're pretty glad that you're here, too. Things are going very well. Very pleased.
I agree. Glad you accepted that second chance.
Yes. One last thing, I want to thank Trey and his company for the barbecue today, and also for sponsoring the Bowl Lunch and getting the kids fed and on the train ride, and that was a neat thing.
Great.
All the, all the kids from the Bowl Winners this year got to go on that train ride, and that was really neat to see. So, thank you.
Rick Franklin and the Albany Eastern Railroad.
Yeah, that was really nice of them.
Can we give his firm a letter or something to hang on the wall?
My guess is Deila's working on something. And we made sure and got a picture, and I'm gonna blow up a picture so that it's hanging on the wall with all the kids.
Oh, good. Great. Anything else?
And thank you, Doc, for being the city representative there.
Sure.
Anything else?
You know, just this morning, we had 400 elementary kids from Riverview walk through Cheetah Park from...
That was neat.
Parking lot to school, and parents and teachers. They do that on an annual basis, and it was always good to see that happen.
Those kids walked fast.
Running.
It was neat to see the fire department and the police department out there. That was great. Okay, last public comments. Nobody from the public is here. And items from the press. Do you have anything, Matt?
Nothing.
Nothing from Matt?